Call the meeting to order, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Buckner?
Here.
Reverend Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Hood?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here.
Mr. Mayo?
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Vogler?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
Invitation by Vice Mayor Gary Miller, followed by a pledge of allegiance, asks everyone to please stand.
Last week, three of my patients in my practice died. Over the course of the week, thousands died in this country. Now, we've lost more people than an entire WWII, 440,000. Are we at war? My wife and I were talking tonight. Is this like what our parents felt in WWII? We have shortages and necessities. We have production lines, they're not making tanks and airplanes now. They're making PPE, vaccines, respirators. We can't go to sporting events or celebrations. We have restrictions. We have neighbors dying. Every day, we look at the paper to see how many more have died, how many more of our neighbors have died. It's like a war. Let us pray. Dear Lord, the fight against COVID-19 goes on. We must have your aid. To give us faith to go on when we feel like giving up, to resupply our strength to continue to struggle when the fight seems hopeless, to encourage others when their resolve weakens, to recruit our fellow man and woman to join us in defeating our enemy, to work with all others in helping them realize that our adversary does not discriminate regarding race, religion, vocation, lifestyle, the rich or the poor. Each of us can be stricken down with this dread disease. We have to, we must work together if we are to defeat our common foe. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening to everyone, those who are here and those who are watching. We want to extend an invitation to say once again, good evening. Communications from visitors, citizens who desire to speak on matters not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Citizens who desire to speak on agenda items will be heard when the agenda item is considered. Anyone who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time and please state your name and your address for the record. Anyone who would like to speak on any agenda item may come forward at this time and please state your name. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is, of course, Tommy Bennett, President of the Danville Branch NAACP. And I would just like to say, first of all, this is the first week of February and the citizens of Danville and around the world, we are celebrating Black History Month. For this month, I'd just like to say thank you and give thanks to those who paved the way. If you look at the sign in front of the courthouse for Bloody Monday, there's a lot of people in the city of Danville and that served that day and that were severely beaten. So, I just want to say happy Black History Month for the month of February. Also, on behalf of the Health Department, God bless the City Manager's Office and everybody on the vaccines that we were able to serve our community. It was fantastic day at the community market. And I would like to give hats off to the Vice Mayor, Dr. Miller. I sat in my car at 8:00 that morning and watched Dr. Miller, how he worked the crowd, how he was making sure that everything was safe. I tell you, Dr. Miller is one of the best Vice Mayors I've ever seen in my life. I would like to say thank you, Dr. Miller, for all that you do to help our community with the vaccine. And I talked with Dr. Janice Underwood, who's the Diversity Coordinator for the state of Virginia. And they're sending more vaccines our way for this weekend. But, you know, last week, it was the last city council meeting, it was said that we have a governor that's a doctor, and we do. And he's a good doctor and a great governor. But, when I checked the stats, he couldn't send Virginia any vaccines because it was held up in the federal. But now that we have a new federal administration, things are now being released and we're looking good in Virginia. So I would just like to say thank you and on this weekend, please show up and show out for our next vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to also, it was in my meeting, Tommy, thank you to thank Dr. Miller. Dr. Miller, you have been on the front line helping this community in regards to not only just this COVID, but Six Feet Apart, and even in the editorials in the papers, just wanted to just take our time to agree with Tommy and say thank you so much. Thank you. We're still in communications. Anyone who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Under meeting minutes, Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Campbell?
Motion received.
Second by Councilman Buckner, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll, please.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Under new business, consideration of granting a special use permit at 1208 Ponty Forest Road, I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Buckner?
May I like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance granting a special use permit application, PLSUP 2020-284, for waiver of yard requirements in accordance with Article 3.m, Section C.21 of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, 1986 as amended, at 1208 Ponty Forest Road, parcel ID number 54171, also known as Grid 1808, Block 004, Parcel 000075, of the City of Danville zoning district map.
Second by Councilman Saunders, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll, please.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye. Communication, City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I wanted to inform the public and the city council about our ongoing efforts, working in collaboration with the Health Department, the local Health Department, SOVA, Avert University, and Pennsylvania County to make sure that we have vaccines available to... I apologize. I want to just to make sure that we have vaccines available to the public as quickly as we get them here in Danville. We have established a pretty good procedure on the ground when it comes to vaccinating through the events we've held. We've had two so far. We have another one coming up that's actually going to be just outside of Danville in the county. We're all working together as a region to make this happen. Each time we have a new event, we get better and better at the coordination and the ability to get people signed up and get people through the process. And we're going to continue to get better as we go along. It has been noticed at the state level that we have that ability to administer vaccines when we get them. So, they've been pretty good with us. Of course, we get the allotment we're supposed to get, but I think on occasion, we're able to get a little extra because we are able to get them to the public. I sent out earlier today an email informing council about how we're doing in Danville compared to other parts of the state when it comes to percentages of people who are getting vaccinated. And we're among the best in the state, which I'm glad and we hope to continue to be that way. So, I think that basically, I'm really happy with the collaboration that we've had, the partners, the institutions in our community that have come together to be able to pull off these events. And even more importantly, in some ways, the volunteers. We have lots of volunteers. Avert University has coordinated the volunteer effort. We have lots of people who are willing to come in and serve as experienced vaccinators, which is important. People who are coordinating the event to make sure people are flowing through properly, traffic control, all those things that are happening. So, I'm very pleased with the effort that we have going forward. We have, about a week or so ago, we created an online portal for people to sign up. They could indicate what, you know, a little bit about themselves and help us to determine when they can get vaccinated. The big thing for the community to realize, we have about 8,000 people signed up through the portal right now. We get about 1,000 vaccines in our community every week, sometimes a little more. So, as you can probably guess, it's going to take, you know, at that pace, a couple of months before we get everyone a first dose of vaccine through these clinics. If more vaccine comes our way, we can do it quicker. But we can only do what we get. And we're doing the best we can with what we get. So, I just want to express appreciation to everyone involved in trying to make that happen, educating the public, talking about how safe it is. I know the council demonstrated to the public how safe it is by having vaccines and showing obviously no ill effects from that. So, the effort continues. I just want the public to be patient as we go through this process and get people vaccinated as quickly as possible.
Councilman Saunders?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Manager, would you say a little bit more about the portal? A lot of people don't understand it, don't sign up. And everything that I've seen and heard, people must sign up. So can you say a little bit more about how people can get on the portal? Whether the portal, whether it be their children, grandchildren, neighbor, somebody, because I'm hearing they must be on a list.
And to back that up, if Mark can put something up on the screen on the portal in regards to the portal, go for it.
Sure. The portal we established about a week or two ago was established because the Health Department locally was being overwhelmed with phone calls and they really couldn't answer all the calls and their voicemail box was filling up. And people were getting frustrated that they weren't able to get in and give information. So, in collaboration with the Health Department, we created a portal for Danville and Pennsylvania County. It's at our website, www.danvilleva.gov/pitdansignup. I believe that's correct. And Mark will correct it if I'm saying it wrong. But when you go there, it's a pretty easy questionnaire. You answer a few questions, determine if you're in Phase 1A or 1B, which is the current phases we're in. And you can put in your contact information, either a cellphone for text messages or an email for an email message. Now, I know not everyone is tech savvy and not everyone has the ability to do that. So what we're asking, in order to make this as efficient as possible, if you could get a family member who, on your behalf, could fill that information out for you, somebody who might receive texts, might have email, who can actually do that for you. And then in some cases, and hopefully much rarer cases, when you don't have a family member or friend who you can go through to have that done, then we're trying to reach out to people individually. For this past event on Friday, folks like Tommy Bennett and others actually knocked on doors. They went door to door in communities and signed people up for the vaccine so that we could make sure that we're hitting the underserved community as much as possible. And we're getting accolades from the state because of that effort. And we certainly are happy that we're able to do that because too many times, there are people that fall through the cracks. And so that worked out well. But that's how you sign up. The one thing that came out about a few days after we established our portal is the governor announced that they are going to have a portal as well, which they actually have established. So there is a portal at the state level. And I'm going to be working in the next few days with our Director of Health, Dr. Spillman, to determine how do we get people that are on our portal, on the state portal, combine that in some way. But at the end of the day, we're going to make sure, if you're on both portals, it's fine because the more information you get about where you can get a vaccine, the better. But certainly, we're going to use the database that we have of over 8,000 people and their contact information to get information out to them. We sent one kind of an update on Friday to everyone who was in the portal, letting them know where things stand. I'm working on another email update for this week as well. And of course, I get approval from the Health Department and others before we actually send it out and making sure we're all on the same page. But basically, we're asking people to be patient. We're working through the list. We're trying to use the priority that's been established for us and we're going to get people down as quickly as possible. One thing I want to address, too, is that there are probably cases where you hear anecdotally, well, so-and-so got it, he doesn't seem to fit the qualifications to be a high risk, or that person's over a certain age, or they're in an at-risk job. Well, you actually don't really know everything about an individual because to be in 1B, you can actually be above 16 years old, 16 to 64, and have a health condition that may not be apparent to most people, but that actually qualifies you to be in this phase. So, we're working very hard to not do anybody unless they're in Phase 1B. The other challenge is that when you administer the Moderna vaccine, there are 10 shots in each vial. And sometimes toward the end of the day, you have multiple vials open at multiple nurse stations and there might be three shots in one and five shots in another, two shots in another. And you want to make sure you don't waste it. So, at the end of the day, you're calling up whoever you can and you're saying, hey, if you're in Phase 1B, can you come down real quick? Let's finish this out. Now, there might be individual events here and there where that happens. So, you know, it's not going to be totally perfect. There are going to be some small errors. But I can assure you that the people who are in charge of establishing these events, they're doing the best they can to serve the community as fairly and equitably as possible and in the priority order that has been recommended by the Health Department. That was a longer answer than the question you asked, but I apologize.
Sometimes people don't show up or call and they can't get there. And that's why you have to call people in. You have to have a waiting list ready to come at a moment's notice.
Well, Tommy, you mentioned Tommy Bennett and there has been some persons called. Tommy, can you come back up and tell what your group is doing as Councilman Saunders and Ken stated in regards to helping people who are really not computer savvy to sign up for the vaccine, please?
Well, I've had calls all day, all week about seniors in their 80s and 90s. They don't have emails, they don't have computers. So what I've done, some I've signed up and I've even given them my email to use. And then I will go by and print it out and take it by their home so they will have a copy of what time their schedules to be there. One young lady was in her 90s and she had her... I sent the email, the portal to her granddaughter in Texas and she was able to get on. We're having... They want our community to get the vaccine, but it's very hard when you've got seniors that don't have any access and then there are some of their kids really don't have computers. And they just, it's a hard time.
So that's when you and your group are coming in and if you can tell them where your address and to thank you of some of our partners, that's where you all are helping us at.
Yeah. Now, what we're doing at the NAACP, the members and the officers are all qualified and have been trained to help them fill out the form. It's real simple. It's less than three minutes to fill out. But the information that they are given out, they want to make sure that it's accurate and that they are able to know what times. Tammy Wright Warren has even offered her bus service to pick people up because the very first one that was done at Avert, it was a great setup, but it was hard for the community to get there.
So, two things here, and I thank you, Councilman Saunders and Ken. Number one is there has been some concerns in regards to transportation. We have connections to partners in our community for transportation. Number two, if persons having a hard time being computer literacy, they can contact NAACP and otherwise.
Right. Now, you got to know that the last two was in Danville. Dr. Spillman is head of the about five different health departments. The next two, he wants to schedule for Pennsylvania County. So they want to even it out so the county can get a chance. That's why it's going out to Cheristone this weekend.
Thank you so much. I appreciate everything that you're doing. It's going to take partnerships, like Dr. Miller and everybody is saying, Ken, it's going to take all of us working together.
Yes, it is.
So we have transportation, we have persons who are willing to help those who are unable to sign up. And thank you so much.
You can call my office and we'll provide transportation.
Thank you. Councilman Saunders?
Mr. Bennett, let me just say, and Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I know we're talking a lot about this tonight and I just wanted to say this. Thank you for all that you do. You have a lot of contact in Richmond and in Washington. It is paying off. I know that. I have been told that Danville, to include our city manager and staff, is the best organized for this event. We hear about this organization all over the country, but in Virginia, Danville is the best organized. So I want to commend Mr. Larkin, you and others for helping to make that possible. There had also been some concern expressed about people being served, like over there off of Mount Cross Road and in terms of minorities not getting the service. Well, it's my understanding that transportation for some people, not all, was a concern, but that's being addressed. And I can tell you now, the one at the community market that we had last week, you, our city manager, and others made certain that everybody on that list got there. I went by there and I sat and I watched the people go in and out. And I was very, very pleased with the organization. So I'm just simply saying, you represent your organization well, but individually, you have more resources than we can count with that calculator. And thank you very much for being in Danville and making sure that our people are served. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, City Manager? Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Deputy City Manager? City Attorney?
Nothing to see with you, Mr. Mayor.
City Clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hood?
Yes, I just want to acknowledge the city moving forward together and watch as the communication comes together with this, getting this vaccine out, which is amazing. I'm just basically, I'm just piggybacking off everything that everyone's said already thus far. Thanking Mr. Bennett and Dr. Miller and our city manager, Mr. Ken Larkin. And just, it literally shows again, when Danville gets on one accord, the strength that it has together, and that's key and that's what it's all about. And also today, just being a part of what a care I helped to give out the laptops for students at DCC today was absolutely phenomenal. So it's a lot of things happening in Danville. There's a lot of things moving together. But also to go back to the COVID vaccines and how well it's organized and also thinking about those that are suffering throughout, but being able to get the vaccine and also thanking the central workers for being able to help and being who they are with this pandemic. But just to watch how we went from the number that we were at getting this vaccine out to where we are now. Danville has done a stand-up job and I only see it getting better. So with everybody supporting one another and moving forward this thing, we will beat this.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayo?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Piggybacking off what Brian said and just to share what today, it was phenomenal to be at DCC, pass not the laptops to the students, the full and the part-time students. That was really good. And on behalf of Dr. Gil Powell and Mr. Shannon Hare for doing that, we're moving forward to making sure that our students get the best education as possible. And also, Dr. Miller, thank you because your guidance and your expertise, your leadership is proving that you are doing a great job. We're right behind you because I do even look to you for that guidance when it comes to what's going on. You seem like you know it in the back of your mind. I know you do.
I've learned it.
But you really are doing a great job in leading not only council, but you're leading the city and with Mr. Bennett and with Mr. Larkin, Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Clark and everyone being behind you. We're going to continue to do that. Also, just want to share with everyone that Danville Community College is partnering with Feeding Southwest Virginia along with PATHS. This Friday from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., they are going to be giving away food boxes. As you know, with the pandemic going on, we do have hunger situations within our communities and families and so forth. It's very hard on so many people. But they are going to be doing this from 1:00 to 3:00 over by Temple Building in the parking lot, which it'll be all Virginia residents qualified, no ID or income requirements. Food will be distributed on a first-come, first-served basis. And this is food to be given to all the citizens who need it and want it. And also PATHS will be giving out information about the COVID vaccine shots, locations, any information on the severities of them, how they can help citizens find the answers that they need as well as the questions that they're asking. So we're asking you, ma'am and sir, to continue to push this right here for them. We're looking forward to collaborating and continuing to collaborate with each and every one in our community. As I look upon this and we knowing that COVID is tough, it's out here, but I'm so proud of not only our council here, but Danville in general because we're pushing forward. And it just reminds me of the three Cs that I always look to to be successful. And I know we're doing this, and that's communication, commitment, and consistency. When we continue to do that right there, we can do all things, all things are possible. And I think we're going to get through this.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yeah, I got a call last week late from a lady familiar to us all. She's known Mama at Cardinal Village, Mama Covington. She asked me if she should have the vaccine. And, you know, she's my patient, she's African-American, she's got heart issues. I said, yes, yes, and yes. And right away, I knew that Tommy Bennett was doing his job because he got a lot of people there to get the vaccine from Cardinal Village and other places. And you could tell, when I got there Saturday, it was very, more diverse than I've seen in any other vaccinations. You know, and I said my prayer that all races are stricken down by this disease, but some are stricken down a lot harder. And that's the African-American and Hispanics. When they get it, they do worse. So it's ultra-important that we get people of all races vaccinated, but particularly these races. And I could tell Tommy had done an outstanding job just by looking at the people coming through. So thank you again, Tommy, for what you did. And what I was doing, I was going up and down. I wasn't working the crowd like a politician. I was thanking each volunteer that I could find and telling them, thank you for being here. There were people from the hospital that I knew. There were Avert students, nursing students and faculty there. I even saw one student give a teacher a shot. I thought that was interesting. But, you know, city workers, just it takes a lot of volunteers to pull off an event like that. And that's where it all comes from. You can say what, you know, Mr. Larkin did a great job and John Kent from the hospital, but if you don't have the volunteers, it isn't going to happen. And we had a lot of volunteers. And I just thank everybody that was there that was participating. The city is just, I mean, the clinics I've been to have all been amazing. There's no, you know, they're like clockwork. You got your time, you come in, you get registered, you get checked off, you get your vaccine. The only wait you have is the 15 or 30 minutes afterwards where they keep you around to make sure you're okay after the shot. That's your waiting line. That's it. There are really no wait to get in there and out. And that's why the state's taking notice how well the clinics are running. And then today, it's been mentioned, the city had monies and Ken heard the tale of how they repurposed some monies from scholarships for DCC students that weren't being used and turned these into computers. So 200 computers were given away to Danville's city residents. The county also, they come up with 300 last week for county residents. And, you know, they were all just most appreciative. It was just... And, you know, they, they were all just most appreciative, it was just fun, you know, sometimes you do things at council that are tedious and drudgery, but this was fun, giving out these computers, because everybody's face lit up when they got one. And particularly one lady, a patient of mine, Carol Betts, she's a grandmother. Well, I ask, her story was, she put her children through college, she'd gone back and put them through school, then she was helping the grandchildren, and then one day she woke up and says, why am I not going to school? I'm the only one that doesn't go to college. So she had gone back to DCC to go to nursing school, and she was there today, and she was most appreciative of getting the computer, because a lot of the students have to come into the library, they, they don't have computers at home, they have to do their homework at night at the library where they can get online. So this, this was just a great event today, I know several other council members have commented and will comment. But again, thanks to DCC and, and the city for doing that, thank you.
Councilman Mayo, you have a follow-up?
Yes, I also wanted to also get, give thanks to the DCC nursing department, as you know, they're about top nursing department in the state of Virginia. Every year, they, they really produce great numbers, graduation rates are just outstanding, but they are also in, in the trenches in helping out with that. And that's one of the things that the nursing department, they look forward to doing it also, and they're going to be pushing efforts along with all Avery and all of us together. Thank you.
And clerk.
Saunders?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief. Today, I received communication from Richmond, and just by telephone, and we know that this pandemic issue and the vaccine is just chaos all over the world. But the call that I received was, in Virginia, Danville is leading in organi, in organization in terms of getting people vaccinated. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you, Mr. City Manager and your staff, thank all the council members, and thank all the volunteers for making this possible. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Vogler?
Yes, thank you. I, I was listening to a podcast yesterday with Jeff Lynch, who is my pastor at Compassion Church and Taekwon Graves, of course, we know is on the school board, and they were shining a light on the fact that currently there are 33 children in the Danville Public School System who've been identified as, as homeless, and that's not even counting the number of, of children in the school system who are currently living in, in hotels day-to-day. And I got to tell you, it, as a parent of, of two young children, to hear that, really, you know, it breaks your heart, and so hearing that, I, I immediately start to think, what can be done? What can be done in the short term, and, and what can be done in the long term? And so I know there's several people in this council who, who are active and involved, and, and folks watching at home who, who may want to, to come up with this, and, and I can't tell you tonight that I have a solution, but I can promise you that I want to do everything I can do to be a part of that solution, to, to do what we can to help these, these young folks, because that number, until that number's zero, there's work to be done. And so I, I'm committed to do what I can to, to help on that end, and I look forward, I know there'll be a lot of folks who, who want to roll up their sleeves and try to, try to figure this out. Along those lines, it was several months ago, Shannon Hare gave me a call, Shannon and I have been friends for a number of years, Shannon at DCC, that's been mentioned here tonight, and was talking about how DCC has been working through COVID like a number, number of other institutions, and, and, you know, having to do virtual, and, and the strain that that was putting on their students, and as mentioned, some mentioned before, that the access to devices, whether it's laptops, and of course, and internet access with it, with a number of them is scarce for the students, and so what, what could be done? And of course, the city had CARES Act funding, and, and could there be a, a possible scenario where the city could, could help aid in that effort? And so he and I reached out to the city manager, and then they began getting discussions going, and, and Ken, as he always does, did a tremendous job. Our, our city manager, I know we all probably contact him to, to some extent, I, I know personally, I bug him to death, probably too many times a day to count, but he always goes above and beyond to respond to constituents, and if constituents come to me, or community partners come to me with something, Ken is always quick to jump on it. And so as was mentioned, today, we were able to hand out a couple hundred laptops to city residents in, in a big, big way, and I don't want to go into more details, because everyone has already talked about it, but what a, what a tremendous event today, and, and a great partnership, and again, just our city manager, he jumps right on it, and he finds a way to, to make things happen. And lastly, I want to thank all my fellow council members, and the vice mayor, and the mayor. You know, I, I look at, at other elected bodies across Virginia and across the country, and then I look at Congress, and how broken it is, and you look at some of these folks in Congress, it's like watching The Twilight Zone, and you know, and the General Assembly, and just how examples of how bodies don't work well together. And then I look at our elected body, and how well we do work well together. You got nine different people up here with nine different opinions about things, but in my eight-plus years here that I've been here now, this council works. It works, and it works because of each one of the individuals who are here, and, and you all's commitment to seeing this city grow, and this city thrive, and improve, and do better, and at each, at the heart of each one of the people here, and including the staff as well, that's what drives each one of us, is to see this city get better every day, and to watch us work together over the years. I, I've been in awe of it already, but again, when I look at some of the other examples, and then I think, wow, we really are fortunate, and so I feel blessed and honored just to be sitting here with each of you, and I want to thank you. We have a great city council, and we have a tremendous, tremendous city filled with people who are working hard every day, especially this last year, it's been so hard on small business owners, on the frontline workers, on everybody, and our city, time and time again, pulls together, comes together, and moves forward. That's why Danville's the comeback city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Whittle?
Sure. Danville Public School System has 250 that are not, that are, um, speaking about DCC, or, or no, just in general, kind of people that were, the amount of kids homeless, is it Danville Public Schools?
Yeah, that's coming from Taekwon, yes, on the school board.
Well, and, and the good, I did, I did meet with some of them down there, at least to find some sort of wraparound program that we could put together to bring those kids into it, and it might come where council has to lean in and look at it at, at a different way, but it's, it's a serious problem, thankfully for bringing it up. Everybody else, you know, that, y'all have counted about everything that I was going to say, and everybody has worked hard, and I, I know the staff has, I know council has, I know everybody is on board and trying to do the best they can with what we got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, like everybody's already stated, the volunteers, and the city manager, and the city staff, and the hospital staff, and the health department staff, and just, I can't say enough about the volunteers that have helped, just getting out in these clinics and helping people, and what a selfless thing to do, to get out and help somebody in this, this time. This is a time like none of us have ever seen, and hopefully, once this is passes, we'll never see anything like it again. So if you're able to do your part, certainly step on out there and, and give somebody a hand, because it's a, it's a very noble thing to do. Also, Mr. Hood, I'm about to get you in trouble. Ms. Sylvia Hood retired on January 31st after 45 years with Bodie Noel Enterprises, which is Hardee's, she worked at Hardee's on West Main, I think, for 45 years, is that correct? Congratulations, Sylvia. We're all very happy for you, and know you're going to do great things in your retirement, hopefully you'll be able to get your brother straight, and I hope he just got in trouble too. That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Reverend Campbell?
Yes, I think most of, all of my statements have been stated, and I did to all that, commend Dr. Miller, Tommy Bennett, NAACP. I think the most joyful, exciting thing in this pandemic is to see what has happened in Danville, us working together, dealing with concern that is killing many, and many who are getting sick. We will overcome this, we'll move forward, and most definitely, Danville will be better. I just want to commend all of the city employees, and even through the storm, how the efficiency. And lastly, I just want to talk about a very special man, my mentor, Apostle Campbell, tomorrow is his birthday, and he'll be 91 years old. So I just want to say, Pop, we want to wish you a happy birthday, and many, many more, and can't wait to celebrate with you on tomorrow for your birthday. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. To city council members, I have to ditto, thank you all so much for all that you all do. Friday, at the community market, on Saturday, deputy city manager and myself was in a meeting, it was a very good meeting of citizens in our community who want to help us move the community forward, and deputy city manager and I were really enthused by persons in our community, a wide array of persons who really shared with us how they want to help us move the city forward. And then on Sunday, I got a call, a three-way call, from Tommy, I think it was on a call too, a person's talking exactly what Councilman Vogler was talking about, they were talking about the homeless shelter. And they shared with me the numbers at the homeless shelter, they talked to me about persons that they're starting to see more and more people on the streets, in which I'm seeing it as well, they talked about the persons that they see at Coleman Marketplace now that are panhandling, they talk about people that are seeing more and more people, and we had a very in-depth conversation, and I shared with them that I'll be sharing with council this Saturday, because once again, council is working this Saturday, glad we brought that up. As Madison stated, that number, when you mentioned that number, I just knew that number was a little bit higher than that because of all of the challenges and things that people are facing. The most amazing thing about it is people won't share because of pride what their needs are, but city manager, deputy city manager and I, I think we get emails all the time of people asking for help. We got an email about a person that's from Rent, I get it all day, I get it every day, and it kind of saddens me, especially when I go around town, and a lot of times, people, Councilman Saunders, they want to help people, but they don't realize, is this a game, are they, are they hustling, what they're trying to do, and sometimes you can't, you don't know what to do, so we, hopefully, we can continue to address and do these things, because we have a great community, we have people in the community, as was stated, that are willing to help, but it's sometimes people who wanted to help, you know, as I was saying, it don't let your good be evil spoken of, sometimes you want to do good, and people's, so we just trying to overcome that. I just want to thank the city, thank to the council, city manager, city staff with all that you're, they're doing, and also, as was stated by Councilman Campbell, the city staff with the ice this past weekend, and I think we possibly may be expecting something this weekend, Super Bowl weekend, but I just want to thank the city staff for all that they're doing. If there's no more business for this evening, I adjourn this meeting.